Welcome to City of Milpitas Planning Commission. Today is October 11, 2023. Those wishing to make a public comment, cards are in the back. Fill them out and present them to our Recording Secretary, Ms. Medina. Public comments will be allowed tonight. There was an announcement by the city that they're going to temporarily allow public comments only in person. However, because this agenda was posted prior to that notice, public comments will be allowed. So anyone wishing to make a public comment. The agenda has the instructions. So call in meeting order, Pledge of Legions. I will lead. You stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic which stands one nation under God.
Thank you. Next item, roll call, Ms. Medina.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I will start attendance with Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Here.
Commissioner Owasty.
Here.
Commissioner Galang.
Here.
Commissioner Albana.
Present.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Present.
And Chair Chuan.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Conflict of Interest Declaration. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every member of the Commission whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Ms. Medina, would you please go down the roll?
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Commissioner Galang.
None.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
None.
Chair Chuan.
None.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no reported financial or personal conflicts. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contract with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
I'm so sorry. None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Commissioner Galang.
None.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
None.
Chair Chuan.
None.
Let the record reflect no reported campaign contribution conflicts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next item, Approval Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda for October 11, 2023?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for October 11, 2023.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Medina Ashby, Vice Chair.
Second.
And second from Vice Chair Sierdella. Ms. Medina, would you please do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Yes.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan.
Aye. All right, next item. Approval of Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 23rd?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 23rd.
A motion from Commissioner Owasty. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Ms. Medina, would you please go down and roll?
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
And Chair.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting minutes for August 23rd are approved, and also agendas approved as well, too. Okay, next is, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 30th? Commissioner Albana?
Chair, yes, I move for the agenda to be approved for August 30th.
The meeting minutes. Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Albana. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Galang. Commissioner Galang, if you don't mind, when you speak, please use the mic. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Medina, would you go down the roll, please?
Was the second from Galang?
The second was.
He would have to abstain.
Actually, you cannot make the motion because, or the second. So can I get another second?
Yes, you have to make a motion.
Or second from Vice Chair Sierdella. Okay, so let me go, Ms. Medina, would you go down the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner, I'll go by who is present. Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Now Chair Chuan, Commissioner Galang would have to abstain because they were absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. And then the final meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 27th?
Make a motion.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Galang. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second from Vice Chair Sierdella. Ms. Medina, would you please go down the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Medina Ashby would have to abstain. Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
And Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, all the meeting minutes have been approved. Next item is announcements. Do I have any announcements from any of the planning commissioners? Commissioner Medina Ashby, did you have? You have your mic on? Okay. Any announcements? I have one. So there was an email sent out to the commissioners. There was some training or some ethics training. So just, if you got the email, that means you need to do the training. So just wanted to note that. And as I also noted earlier, there was an announcement by the city. It's on the city website that they will temporarily suspend public comments online. So any public comments that need to be made will be made in person. Tonight's Planning Commission will be an exception since the agenda was posted prior to that. So if there's no further announcements, Planning Director, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Sierdella has an announcement.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Ned on becoming the City Manager.
Hey, from our side, everything.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and welcome City Manager Ned Thomas. Right, Planning Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't have any announcements.
All right, thank you. Next item, Public Forum.
Pardon me, Chair Chuan, can I have one comment briefly?
Yes, please.
Just to clarify for the public, the ethics training that the Plan Commission does is required by state law. It's a regular annual training that we, the city helps to ensure compliance with.
Thank you, City Attorney. All right, next item, Public Forum. Those interested are invited to address Planning Commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda orally via Zoom webinar. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the Recording Secretary's record, and comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As an item not on the agenda, no responses required from city staff or the Plan Commission, and no action can be taken. Planning Commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Chair, we have no community members in the chamber. However, we have once, one person in the queue, Ms. Barbara Navarro.
Okay. Ms. Navarro, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair and fellow Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a heads up that in the Milpitas post, there was a posting that the property that was at, that's at 1339 Terra Vista Court is coming before the City Council next Tuesday, October 17th, requesting a variance to the hillside ordinance. The property is, that they would like to build is going to be above the crest line, and I think back in September of last year, you reviewed this property, and I think the city was making recommendations for changes. And I don't believe that any have been made. We we have sent, a group of us have sent an email forward to the Planning Director requesting the link to the file so we could review it. And we do plan on being present at the City Council member meeting, I guess, now, because we won't be able to do it online with public comments. And we really feel it's important for all the citizens of Milpitas to know about this because this hillside ordinance was voted on many years ago to protect our hillside, and variances to this could create a precedence for others. So I just wanted to alert you to this, and I thank you for your commitment to the citizens of Milpitas.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Ms. Medina, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Chair, we have Mr. Frank Bush.
Thank you. And Mr. Bush, you have three minutes.
Hello. I read the same article in the Milpitas post about the development, and it was not very clear in, you know, what changes are required or they're going to be asking for. And, you know, as Barbara Navarro said, that, you know, the documentation, you know, with the plans or the requested variance that's going to be asked for next City Council meeting is not available. So there's, we can't really, you know, prepare for any comments that we might want to make at the City Council meeting. So if, you know, we're not getting given enough forewarning or, you know, getting the documents soon enough, you know, we won't be able to, you know, prepare for, you know, an argument for that meeting. And, you know, if that's the case, you know, I'd like to see that the city councils looking at the request for variance be postponed until the next, the following City Council meeting. And, you know, I think that it's very important to try and maintain the hillside ordinance and to try, not to try, but, you know, to disallow any deviation from the hillside protective ordinance or zoning. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Medina, do we have any other further public comments?
There are no other community members in the queue.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item, Public Hearing, item 9-1. Planning Director.
The item before you tonight is Polte Homes Residential Townhomes and Apartments, which involves a request for a variety of planning entitlements, ultimately for a multifamily residential project at 1355 California Circle. Senior Planner Lillian Van Hooyt is here to give staff's presentation, which will include more details regarding the project and staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, fellow staff, guests and residents of Milpitas. As mentioned, the item before you is a request for a development application for Polte Homes for the property located at 1355 California Circle. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the application is a request for a number of different entitlements that include a general plan text amendment, a zoning map amendment, a site development permit, a conditional use permit, a vesting tentative map, a density bonus permit, tree removal permit, and an environmental assessment to allow demolition of one industrial building, the removal and replacement of 27 ordinance-sized trees, and the development of a multifamily residential project consisting of 13 residential buildings up to 51 feet in height and one residential apartment building up to 78 feet in height, for a total of 206 residential units. The project will also include 393 vehicle parking spaces, a 0.32 acre internal park, and associated site improvements on a 6.7 acre site. The developer also proposes 31 of the apartment units for rent at the lower income level and 44 apartment units for rent at the moderate income level, which allows them to invoke the state density bonus law. By invoking the state density bonus law, the developer is eligible for concessions, waivers, and parking standards different than the city standards. Next slide, please. Here we see the satellite view of the property outlined in red. The site is located along the northwestern portion of the city of Milpitas, west of Millmont Drive, east of IA 80, and north of Cadillac Court. Next slide, please. The map above on the screen demonstrates the project site's current general plan designation. The project is located in the neighborhood commercial mixed-use NCMU district represented by the purple color, and the site is surrounded by other properties within the neighborhood commercial mixed-use land use designation, as well as other residential zones like high-density residential HDR to the northeast and south, southeast and southeast of the subject site, shown as the orange color on the screen. Next slide, please. And the map here shows the project site's current zoning designation. The project is located in the industrial park MP zoning district, represented by the light gray color. The site is surrounded by other industrial park zone properties, as well as other residential zones like R1-2.5 to the northeast and R3 to the southeast. Next slide, please. On March 9, 2021, the city of Milpitas adopted General Plan 2040. One of the actions within the general plan is LU-2B, which states that the city should seek to prepare and adopt a specific plan for the California Circle area. And then on September 21, 2021, the city council received a presentation from Jim Sullivan on behalf of Polte Homes to develop a property within the future California Circle-specific plan area. The city staff initially had concerns with the proposed residential project because the subject site is located adjacent to the IA 80 freeway and is a prime economic development opportunity for the city. The site is also within proximity to the Newbie Island Regional Landfill and a nearby regional wastewater treatment facility. In addition, the existing industrial park zoning of the proposed location is not compatible with the residential, with residential projects. The city council ultimately directed staff to allow the applicant to pursue the necessary entitlements to develop their project without the preparation of a specific plan. Next slide, please. So as part of this project, the applicant proposes to remove any language from the Milpitas general plan that requires the preparation or adoption of a specific plan for the California Circle area, specifically General Plan Action LU-2B. The applicant also proposes to remove the policy stating that a residential-only project must be 100% affordable to low and very low-income categories within the NCMU general plan designation on page LU-6. By approving the general plan text amendment and associated project, the city council will be given the flexibility to consider a multifamily residential development project at the subject site that provides a public benefit in the current Milpitas municipal code. Next slide, please. And as previously mentioned, since the project is zoned industrial park, it will have to be rezoned to allow 100% multifamily residential development. And it's, the applicant has proposed to rezone it to MXD, mixed use. And this zoning designation would allow a residential density of 21 to 30 dwelling units per acre. Furthermore, the MXD district is an implementing zoning district of the general plan NCMU land use designation. And the proposed zoning map amendment will provide consistency with the, the general plan designation. Next slide, please. This is an overall site plan of the project. So the project requires a site development permit to develop 206 residential units. In total, the project would include 131 townhome condominium units spread across 13 multifamily buildings. They will all be three-bedroom units with two-car garages. 21 will be side-by-side garages, and the remaining will be tandem. The project also includes 75 apartment units. The building is comprised of studios, one bedrooms, and two-bedroom units, as well as 56 spaces within the podium parking structure and 29 spaces adjacent to the podium. The total density proposed for the project is 30.8 dwelling units per acre. The project includes site improvements like guest parking, internal driveways to access the parking garages, 269 new trees, and a 0.32 acre internal park and outdoor amenity spaces. Next slide, please. The project also includes a vesting tentative map, which can only be approved via conditional use permit. The tentative map will allow the developer to subdivide the property and the units into condominiums where they will be made for sale. Because the subdivision is more than five residential units, the city council has the final decision on the project with a recommendation of approval from the planning commission. And lastly, the project also requires a CUP for the tandem parking garage configuration. Next slide, please. The project also includes a density bonus permit, which is allowed for projects that incorporate affordable housing units, as well as compliance with the city's affordable housing ordinance. So the city's affordable housing ordinance, or also known as the AHO, requires all developers to incorporate up to 15% of their total units as affordable units, also known as below-market rate or BMR units. The ordinance requires the applicant to not only disperse the affordable units throughout the development, but the unit should be proportionate to the bedroom mix, quality, and unit types of the market rate units. The table on the screen shows a number of required affordable units per unit type based on the AHO. 20 townhomes would typically be required at the moderate-for-sale level, and 11 apartment units would be required at the low-income rental level for a total of 31 units. The applicant has proposed to reserve 31 apartment units at the low-income rental level on a prorata basis. So this would consist of seven studios, 16 one-bedrooms at low income, and eight two-bedrooms at low income. The applicant is also reserving the remaining 44 apartment units at the moderate-income rental level, which will help the city meet its regional housing needs allocation or arena numbers. Deviations or exceptions from the affordable housing ordinance require city council approval. Next slide, please. And if granted, the exception to the affordable housing ordinance, the project would qualify for state density bonus. Since the city has an affordable housing ordinance, which has a greater percentage of affordable housing than the state density bonus law requires, the developer is granted state density bonus law provisions. And the provisions can be seen on the screen here. The developer is requesting a waiver for the front setback of the apartment building and building height to facilitate the construction of the affordable housing building. Both of these waivers are necessary to achieve the proposed density and open space areas across the site. Next slide, please. The developer is also requesting a waiver for the amount of parking overall, the number of guest parking spaces, and for the number of compact parking spaces. Next slide, please. So in order to demonstrate the parking requirement, staff has created the table above, which shows the parking requirement for the state density bonus law. The state density bonus law limits parking spaces and completely removes guest parking spaces altogether. The developer sees value in providing guest parking and two-car garages for each townhome unit and proposes to proposes to develop them into the project, which exceeds the density bonus permit standards and can be approved. Next slide, please. The project's design concept includes six three-story, seven-plex buildings that are consistent with existing residential development along California Circle. Next slide, please. The project also consists of eight four-story, 12-plex residential buildings. And these colors, the colors and materials of both building types were chosen to complement the residential developments along California Circle. Next slide, please. The proposed six-story multifamily apartment building will be the most prominent facade along California Circle. The building's design features exterior plaster walls, vinyl windows accented with stone veneer and wood frame canopies along the ground floor, along with an aluminum storefront system. The color for the materials proposed are neutral grays and earth tones with white and darker colors used to break up the massing of the building. Next slide, please. The project also includes the removal of 27 ordinance-sized trees, and they will be replaced with up to 269 new trees. Additional landscape elements include paseos between buildings and an internal park. The proposed park includes a playground, picnic tables, turf, bike racks, a shade sail structure, and a mailbox enclosure. The apartment building will also have amenities like a club terrace and an entertainment terrace. The entertainment terrace will include various seating areas and a dining pavilion. While the club area, the club terrace will have lounge furniture and additional seating areas, as well as a grilling station. The applicant will need to pay the following impact fees. A public art fee would be equal to one-half of 1% of building development costs, or the applicant may provide public art fee on-site. And the other fee that will be due at building permit issuance is the park-in-loo fee. The city's subdivision ordinance requires new subdivisions to dedicate five acres of parkland for every thousand persons or payment of park-in-loo. Additionally, at least 60% of the parkland requirement must be provided as public parklands. So the developer proposes 206 units resulting in an estimated population of 513 new residents. Based on this population estimate, the applicant must provide 1.8 acres of parkland, equivalent to approximately $5 million. To satisfy the parkland requirement, the project includes approximately 80,000 square feet of open space and private recreation on the site. Each townhome has private balconies, the apartment building has two decks, and there's also an internal park with with facilities for both passive and active recreation. The private recreation areas will be credited against the requirement of dedication for park and recreation purposes. However, since the city code requires that 60% of the parkland requirement must be provided as public parkland, and no public parkland is proposed, the project must pay the required 60% for approximately $3 million. Next slide, please. A notice was published in the Milpitas Post, and a sign was placed on the property. The city also sent out approximately 553 postcards informing residents and property owners of the project. Lastly, the project has been carefully analyzed against state law, the Milpitas general plan, and the zoning ordinance, which includes findings that include a compatible design with neighboring projects and with the proposed general plan text amendment and zoning map amendment. The project is consistent with the goals and policies of the Milpitas zoning ordinance and Milpitas general plan. For components of the project that are not consistent with the zoning ordinance, they have been rectified per the allowable waivers of the state density bonus law. And lastly, the project meets the conditions of Government Code Section 66474 regarding subdivision law and the subdivision map act. Next slide, please. Upon review of the application for the proposed project, the city determined that the project has the potential result or potential to result in potentially significant environmental impacts, and therefore that an ER should be prepared. In accordance with Section 15082 of the SECO guidelines, the city prepared a Notice of Preparation, NOP, for the draft EIR to determine which environmental topics should be analyzed under an environmental impact report. The NOP was circulated on November 14 of 2022 to local, state, and federal agencies and nearby property owners within 1,000 feet. Or the, for the project, well, sorry, within 1,000 feet. And then a subsequent scoping session was held on November 30, 2022, to solicit comment on potential topics to be analyzed under the DEIR. The city prepared the, the draft environmental impact report and circulated this document for the required 45-day public review on July 7, 2023. And a public comment meeting for the draft EIR was held on August 3, 2023. Next slide, please. Other than the impact shown above, all the environmental impacts can be reduced to less than significant levels through implementation of standard conditions of approval or recommended mitigation and to ensure that no impact mitig, that, sorry, of approval or recommended mitigation ensures or no impact and requiring no mitigation. Given that significant and unavoidable impacts would remain with respect to aesthetics, a statement of overriding considerations has been prepared. The statement of overriding, overriding consideration recommends that the city council certify the EIR, approve a mitigation monitoring program, and make findings that while there are significant unavoidable impacts, there are other economic, legal, social, technological, environmental, and other considerations that outweigh these impacts and warrant approving the project. The FEIR with the, with the statement of overriding considerations is attached to Resolution 23-018. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends that the planning commission open the public hearing to receive comments, move to close the public hearing, and that they adopt Resolution Number 23-018, recommending that the city council certify an environmental impact report pursuant to Public Resources Code Sections 21080D and 21082.2D and SECO Guidelines Section 15064, and that they adopt Resolution Number 23-017, recommending that the city council approve General Plan Text Amendment Number GP 22-0001, zoning map amendment number ZA 22-0001, site development permit number SD 22-0003, conditional use permit number UP 22-0001, vesting tentative map number MT 22-001, density bonus permit number DB 22-0003, tree removal permit number TR 23-0021, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hoa. One thing I wanted to mention earlier in the announcement, so I forgot to mention that I actually did meet with the, the project applicant and also the consultant as well, but just wanted to disclose that. I just wanted to disclose that. Meantime, any questions for staff or the applicant? Vice Chair?
Yes, I additionally forgot to mention that I did meet with the applicant also.
Ms. Van Hoa is, does the applicant have a presentation or wish to show anything or?
Yes, I believe they do have an presentation.
Okay, prior to that, I see Commissioner Wasty has his light on.
Yeah, I met with the applicant last week. And we went through, they showed me the project. And I also emailed the department
Okay.
over before meeting them.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so there's a presentation, you said, Ms. Van Hoa?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Come on up, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Sullivan, the applicant for Polty Group. And I do have some members with with the Polty Group team with me, a couple of senior vice presidents, as well as my friend and another consultant, Armando Gomez. And I think on the line I talked to, is it Ms. Medina? Mrs. Medina? I have our civil engineers as well, in case there's any engineering questions that come up that I can't answer. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And Lillian, I don't know if Mrs. Medina or you are going to pull up my PowerPoint presentation. While that's happening, I just want to quickly kind of let the council and the public at home know that as Lillian had pointed out, about two and a half years ago, the Polty Group and myself started working on this particular project. Knowing that there was going to be a general plan amendment, or actually later what became a general plan amendment, I think, text change or amendment to the general plan text. We had to go in front of the city council and at that time for basically allowing us to move forward with our application. That's one of the things that's requirement here in the city of Milpitas. We were asked at that time by council to reach out to as many neighborhood groups and other associations here in Milpitas. And both Mr. Gomez and myself, I think, have done that, meeting with, I think, six or seven different associations and groups. We also took part in both the notice of preparation, which was a public hearing. And then during the comment period of the E I R, there was another public hearing. So what you're going to see in front of you is essentially the the same presentation that I have shown over the past couple of years. So this is myself, I've done multiple projects here in Milpitas. We can go to, I just lately, or the kind of the latest thing that I did with another company, but Polty was also involved with is the metro station. That's kind of located on the corner of Montague Expressway and Piper. And also was involved in doing that Bob, no, but McLaughlin Park. Oh, Maguire Park, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Maguire. Next, next slide, please. So we already saw the project location, next slide. Site characteristics, it's just under six point seven acres in size. The industrial space is about ninety thousand five hundred square feet. It's obviously an obsolete kind of building. It's been vacant for about ten years now. Next slide. So project characteristics, I think Lillian already kind of, you know, covered this as you could see on the slides that were shown, it's kind of a contemporary architecture. There are, I think that Lillian had kind of mentioned, you know, just, you know, townhomes and the apartments, but, you know, it's a little bit different. You have the townhomes, which are three-story. The what we call stacked flats or condominiums, which are four-story. And then obviously the apartment building, and there's only five buildings of the seventh unit building. I think Lillian mentioned six, but there's only five. Next slide, please. Here's a site and really quickly, I just kind of wanted to point out a couple of changes that were made from our earliest renditions. So I think when we first approached council and staff, it was pretty much a hundred percent just residential. We have a great land planner as part of the team that was able to incorporate, based on council's suggestion, kind of a a park or, you know, kind of an open space feature. So we have about a third of an acre and then, you know, obviously the assorted, you know, kind of paseos that I'll call them, along with quite a lot of things that are inside of the apartment building themselves. The other big change that was made, if you look at the two kind of seven-unit buildings that are fronting onto California Circle and you see that fairly wide, I call it now a pedestrian entrance into the park. That used to be the main entrance where the vehicles were going to come. And actually, in working with staff, there was some concern with that location and the proximity to a crosswalk that kind of went across California Circle. Earlier, what we were hoping was to kind of actually just move the crosswalk. There were some issues in that. I just bring this up because it was touched upon in the E I R as well. So with staff and with the traffic engineers that that staff and and impact sciences were using, we've shifted the main entrance into the, I'll call it the hundred and thirty-one units down to the southern property line. The apartments have a separate ingress egress point to their building up along the northern portion of the property. And you see kind of in in between, not the pedestrian access, but there's where some parking is, that would be an emergency vehicle access. So it would be open for, you know, police, fire, any kind of an emergency type situation. And and actually, we're just tickled. We think that this is a really good plan and it's been refined. Like I said, you know, kind of over this period of, you know, two years or so. Next slide, please. This is just kind of a blow up of the of the park area. Really quickly, I wanted to kind of point out because I did, I think I read in the in the E I R, I wasn't even aware of it. But this is a point three two acre park or just, you know, a sconce below a third of an acre. But overall, on our site, our open space, and I think that this is including the apartments, is about eighty thousand square feet, which is just, you know, shy of two acres. I think it's the one point eight acres. And that's, you know, the paseos and and other things, but this is the the main, you know, kind of area. And I will point out another thing kind of through this process, the N O P and both the comment period with some of the neighbors, you know, kind of asking Polty Group has, I think graciously offered to, typically, this is a private park, it's going to be privately owned and maintained, available for those homeowners and for the apartment people. But Polty was willing to have a public use easement over this area, which means that the other residential communities nearby, or really anybody, has the ability to, you know, utilize this facility. Thank you. Next slide, please. These are, again, just some of the paseos, next slide. Again, just some of the, you know, pictures of the amenities. This is all in the, you know, kind of our package. Next slide. Project benefits. So again, this is something that we were showing, you know, our B M O, our housing plan, providing up to, I think it's thirty-six point seven percent. I didn't talk about this earlier, but it's our hope, working with the city at targeting Milpitas Unified School District employees for the low and moderate housing that we hope to make available. Not, you know, necessarily saying, hey, all seventy-five are just there, but taking a sizable portion. And we're working with the superintendent to make this a reality where as units would become available, we would set aside some, so it basically have a kind of a first come, first served basis for qualified school district employees. Also helping address the Milpitas regional housing needs. Analysis numbers, I know every city in our great state is kind of having to do this. Providing new opportunities for homeownership and rental housing close to employment. And obviously the tax revenue, you know, for not just local businesses, but for the city itself. Is that the last slide, Lillian, or is there one more? Oh, great. Project schedule. So official application was filed, was filed April two thousand and twenty-two. Again, as Lillian pointed out, we started this process much earlier than that, having to get city council approval to move forward with this. The environmental review, I thought, was extensive. There was a scoping meeting in late two thousand and twenty-two. Here we are in fall of two thousand and twenty-three. If all goes well, we hope to break ground early in two thousand and twenty-four and have first units coming online later next year or in early two thousand and twenty-five. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions. Or I'd love the opportunity to listen if there's any public comment to have an opportunity to kind of come back and address that, and I can answer questions at that time as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there any questions? Or staff or the applicant, Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Yes, what what would be the price point? I know you don't have an exact amount, but for the units that are for sale and then the units that are for rent.
Yeah, that's a great question. So as far as the price, you know, you have townhomes and stacked condos, or I mean, they're different product type. A lot of that is based on, you know, at the time. So I'm sure that Polty Homes being a very responsible developer has an idea. And, you know, my guess would be probably in the eight to nine hundred thousand range for the lower square footage units. And then, you know, probably in the low one million dollar range for units that or, you know, have four bedrooms. So, you know, it kind of depends on the bedroom count. But really, you know, I mean, one of the, I can say that the difficulty was probably two years ago, you know, when interest rates were sub-three percent. You know, you could probably sell the houses for a little bit more money. And with interest rates right now being, you know, closer to seven percent, I want to say. Unfortunately, in order to, you know, sell the product, you know, you have to come down. So I think that the prices that Polty originally thought of, you know, two years ago are probably less now. So I mean, that's, but I mean, it's, they they want to go forward and, you know, I know here in the state of California, we need the housing. The other question that you have, which is a great question, is you know, the price for, you know, the rental price for for the units. And as staff, you know, kind of knows, it's kind of decided on on the county level. So every county in California, I mean, there there's certain, you know, if it's moderate, you're typically eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of the county median income. And the county median income changes every year. So but what it was in two thousand and twenty-three, you know, I looked at those numbers and again, if it's a studio unit, it's going to be less than a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit would be the highest. But generally speaking, it's going to be somewhere in the, I would say, sixteen hundred dollar, you know, kind of a month up to maybe twenty-three hundred dollars per month or, you know, a two-bedroom unit. And and again, you know, you have differing levels, both the low income versus the moderate income. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Vice Chair?
Yes. And I guess it was last year, we had a project that came before us that had a park. And in that park, they put a dog park in there. Would you guys be amenable to putting a dog park in that park?
Yeah, so another good question. And so when we initially laid it out, we were able to kind of open up this space. I know that Polty was, you know, we have a tot lot, you know, and it's in the tot lot is these, it could be designed for different ages. I think I think that this particular one is for younger age children, you know, maybe in the, you know, the two to six-year-old level. And then they also have kind of a shaded structure. You've seen this, you know, at the at the other park that I had mentioned, on Maguire Park, with some picnic, you know, tables there. And so looking for, you know, how big it is. And I know, you know, when we talk, I'm a huge fan of dog parks and, you know, I have a Great Dane and we love to take them there on a on a daily basis. The concern, one of the concerns that we have is looking at that, seeing if they can fit that in. One of the concerns, however, and actually I had brought it up, was it being privately owned and privately maintained, but wanting to open it up to the public. There are some concerns with liability for the future H O A. I don't think that they would necessarily be against it if it was a private dog park, you know, just for the, you know, the five hundred and thirteen people. But if you open it up to the group, you know, I mean, to the public as a whole, you have a dog bite or something like that, you know, that's, you know, sometimes a little bit tough. But we're we're looking at that and if it's something that the commission would like to include in their recommendation to council, you know, I mean, I would say, you know, talk amongst yourselves and and, you know, decide.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Obama.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Based on that, therefore, you're saying like it is possible that this will be open to public?
Yeah, ear-earlier on, I I had mentioned that when we were talking with the community, they said, okay, hey, is this just a private park for, you know, the people that are going to live there or is it going to be open? And Polty Homes instructed me to say, we're willing to make it open to everybody.
But who will maintain it?
The homeowners association. So it's privately owned, privately maintained. I don't know if the city attorney wants to weigh in or the planning director. But typically, I mean, we've done this in other cities, Polty's done it in other cities, that essentially it acts as a public space. So anybody has a right to to go there and use the features. But the city doesn't have to maintain it.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Maybe you can maintain all the other parks too. In Milpitas. No, anyway, I had maybe another question too. I don't know if it's with Lillian. Bonway. This is, I think, one of the developments wherein you have residential condominiums, townhomes. Is this the first one we have in Milpitas where we also have apartments? Would be this the first project we'd have?
Well, I I could defer to Net, who's been around longer than I have, or or Jay knows the city pretty well. But I will say that, so one of the developments that I did, you know, we were talking about the metro station area, kind of Piper, Montague. And that was an area, so I worked at the time for S C S Development. And we had two large apartment buildings there. And then kind of surrounded amongst those apartment buildings, there were three separate developers that were all kind of working. But S C S Development had two townhome projects with two large apartments altogether. And that's kind of what surrounds the the Bob Maguire Park. And you have that, you know, the pedestrian crossing that crosses Montague Expressway from the Bart parking structure, you know, to actually the edge apartment buildings. So I basically was a consultant on on getting that approved. Which looks great, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. So this particular project, the low to moderate income would be on the apartment?
Yes.
But not on the tunnels and condominiums?
Yes, so that's, and I do have, you know, if we want to talk about that more, I know that I provided to Lillian. She'd asked me to kind of provide like an affordable housing narrative. So I kind of, you know, I came up with, you know, just basically a sheet that says, okay, here's the standard, I'll call it ordinance or the standard requirement versus the Polty proposal. And essentially, you know, I think that that Lillian did a good job in 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 showing it. Under the standard proposal, you would do twenty of the hundred and thirty-one townhome condos as for sale and those would be at a moderate price. And then you would do eleven of the apartments at a low income rental level. So that's what would satisfy Milpitas's BMR ordinance. There's a section in the ordinance that says the council is allowed to make an exception if they feel that there's a better approach or kind of a more creative solution is, if you will. And so we believe that by providing seventy five BMR units versus thirty one, but the seventy five are all rental, you know, they're not for sale, that that is a benefit to the city of Milpitas.
That's a beautiful, uh, ratio, seventy five versus tw- thirty one, right?
Yeah.
Uh, is there a possibility that there are people that says, I want, I don't want to be a rental tenant. I want to be an owner. Is there a percentage that we can put into the condominiums or townhome?
I'm sorry, is there a?
Like, instead of putting it all in the rental?
Yeah.
There are also people who want to own home, but affordable.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I guess my response to that would be, and I don't know how many projects, you know, uh, Mr. Lee or, or Ned might know, uh, what, what the development community in Milpitas is kind of going forward with. So there's a lot of, I think, projects where, uh, developers want to build at twenty units per acre, you know, fifteen units per acre. And I think for sale, uh, and I think that there's ample opportunity for, for set, I think that there's more opportunity in, in Milpitas on for sale, moderate sales price than there is, uh, rental units, uh, both moderate and low income. But, you know, I mean, again, thi- this is just, you know, our proposal, our application. You know, it's up to, you know, you guys as a commission to make your recommendation, you know, to the city council.
This is a wonderful project. Uh, it's just putting our heads together, right? And trying to help citizens that say, oh, I, I want to own too, but I can never afford to buy in Milpitas. Is it a possibility? We're just brainstorming. Is it a possibility if we make the units smaller and then provide number of units more affordable for sale? I mean, you know, I'm just tossing that out.
Yeah. No, I, I, I hear.
I leave it up to developers.
And that's not, I mean, it's, it's not part of our application, but I would love, and I'm not sure, uh, Mrs. Medina, if I was to give a, I can give a copy to you, but I, I, I literally did this just this afternoon because Lillian had mentioned that there, that some planning commissioners might have questions about, you know, uh, the proposal.
I was just, I was just throwing this in because like, okay, I'd like to see more affordable housing, which is seventy five units. I also want to see people wanting to own their homes. So maybe seventy five plus, plus a little bit more, you know? I was just thinking about it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so, so this basically, and Lillian, I, I apologize for not getting to this, this to you, um, uh, right before I literally got this, uh, about, uh, or came up with it about two hours ago, but it's essentially all the stuff that I had put in my uh, affordability narrative. Um, you know, it talks about, uh, seventy five deed restricted units versus the thirty one deed restricted units, talks about the percentage, thirty six percent versus fifteen percent. Uh, one of the things that the ordinance says to look at is the complete amount of living space. So we're at, you know, just over forty five thousand square feet versus forty one thousand square feet. If you look at the bedrooms, um, ninety four bedrooms under the Pulte proposal versus seventy four bedrooms. Uh, unit designations, again, um, the Pulte proposal would have, you know, thirty one, this, this kind of goes to RENA, thirty one at low income, forty four at moderate income versus, you know, the standard BMR plan, eleven at low income, twenty at moderate income. But I understand your, your, your concern, you know, Commissioner Albona, as far as saying, you know, it would be nice to have some for sale, uh, moderate units. I, 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 I hear you when you say that.
But of course, we're very happy that at least we're trying to help in providing housing.
Yeah.
It's very important. So.
Uh, you know, most cities, just really quickly, because I, I do this in a lot of cities. And so I've gone through, you know, the housing elements and, and the RENA obligations. Most cities meet their market rate level. That's not really hard to get to. The ones that are hard to get to are the moderate, the low, and then obviously you have, you know, very low too, which is even, you know, kind of more difficult, right? Um, but I think that this helps put a dent, a, a, a fairly substantial dent, you know, uh, in those obligations.
Yes. And the mere fact that you're able to see if you could accomplish it in, in twenty twenty five will meet our housing crisis.
Yeah. Well, if the interest rates keep going up, these will, the, the for sale stuff will be at a moderate price, you know, unfortunately.
Maybe Pulte Homes can give us loans. Deferred program, five percent, six percent, seven percent. Anyway, uh, uh, another one here.
Please go ahead. By, by the way, just, uh, the, the presentation, if you ever noticed, is actually online. So I think there was a picture taken and
Yes.
and uploaded up there.
That's nice. Thank you, Ms. Medina. So, um, I see that the nice thing is you had provided parking. So we expected how many families? About five hundred plus? Five hundred occupants?
Yeah, five hundred and thirteen occupants. I will say that that's, I think that, that Lillian got that number, um, from maybe Impact Sciences, the EIR consultant. So they look at the bedroom count and then they plug in, okay, you know, two point three, you know, people in a, you know, two bedroom or something like that. Obviously you can't have two point three, but you multiply that out, you know, as an estimate.
And we will have enough park?
Yes.
What about the traffic congestion?
So the traffic congestion, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but that's all covered. So the, uh, environmental impact report, which was overseen by the city, looks at, I think, I don't know, seventeen or twenty three different categories, traffic being one of them. And, um, basically had, uh, but that was not a significant impact that couldn't be mitigated. That was, um, in fact, I'm not even sure, Lillian, if you want to look up to see what the impact was for traffic. But, um, I don't think that there was, I, I think that it was, uh, less than significant, if I recall correctly.
I was wondering if we're going to have like a bus stop or somewhere around, just in case.
Yeah, I, um, again, Jay, I don't, I, we probably don't have the, the city's, uh, traffic, uh, engineer on. I, I don't know where a bus stop is on California Circle. Right now, that would have been covered, I think, within the EIR.
I think it's still a draft, so I think they're still reviewing.
No, no, uh, no, it's, it's, it's been reviewed and it, it, the final EIR was issued. Uh, that period has run. So I mean, we're, that's part of, one of your recommendations is recommending whether to certify, uh, I mean, the city council has the ultimate action. But I mean, that's, you know, part of your resolution, the certifying the EIR. But we went through the process. They hired, uh, Hexicon, uh, Hexagon Transportation Consultants, uh, who looked through all the intersections, all the wait times and, and came up with either less than significant or it was a significant, but that could be mitigated. I know that there's no, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, Lillian.
I was going to mention that we also have, um, John Anderson, uh, here from Impact Sciences, and he can speak to, um, the EIR and what it analyzed.
Thank you, Lillian, and good evening, everyone. My name is John Anderson. I'm an associate principal with Impact Sciences, and we were responsible for preparing the environmental impact report. Um, just, uh, a bit of clarification. Currently, the California Environmental Quality Act and the environmental impact report does not include traffic congestion as a category that is analyzed. Um, most of the traffic and transportation issues are related to safety and vehicle miles traveled. They're a greenhouse gas mitigation measure rather than actual traffic and parking issues. However, our consultant that worked with us, Hexagon, as was just mentioned, did work with the city on a traffic impact assessment and, uh, did find that there was not going to be, we can't put it in, in significant versus insignificant terms, but we can say that it was, uh, met with approval from the city transportation department. As to the exact location of any bus stops, I do not recall off the top of my head. If there are any on California Circle currently, I don't think so, but, uh, certainly that would be something that could be considered in the future. So I hope I answered the question clearly enough. There are no impacts, uh, and I, I think Jim mentioned the idea that there was some changes to the access to the site. That had to do with emergency access as well as health and safety. As Jim mentioned, the, the proximity to a crosswalk and also the turnaround radius for fire department, uh, vehicles. So Pulte Homes has been very, the applicant has been very, very cooperative with the city and the, the findings that Hexagon made about traffic and transportation.
Thank you, John. But I just want to say, Pulte wasn't cooperative. It was me. I just want to take a little bit of credit for that. So, uh, but one thing about, I, I, that I will say about the bus, and I can look into that and, and, you know, get back or, or work with staff. But we have, so there's right of way, um, you know, Pulte Homes doesn't own like right up to the curb, right? I mean, typically you have, you know, there's like a a landscaped area and then a sidewalk and stuff. So if that's something that the city wants, you know, I mean, that could be something that the planning commission puts in a recommendation for, you know, a mass transit type alternative. If there's something that doesn't exist already, right, that we can find within the city right of way, uh, the establishment of a, of a, of a bus shuttle type thing.
Thank you so much.
If I, if I may comment, um, so there does not appear to be a bus stop on California Circle. Uh, there is one off of Dixon Landing. Um, but yeah, any, any kind of exploration of a bus stop would have to be done in coordination with VTA. And city staff, we do have quarterly meetings with VTA. And if we see in the future that there is potentially a demand for having a bus route go through here, that's something that we can work out with VTA. But I believe right now, because it's largely industrial, um, there isn't really a demand for a, a, a new bus route that direction, but that's something that we can definitely explore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Obama. Uh, Commissioner Galong.
Sure. Thank you. Um, Mr. Sullivan, um, this project consists of thirty five townhome units and ninety six townhomes units. What is that ninety six townhomes units? Can you show me? What's a stock? Townhomes units?
Yeah. So the ninety six that you're talking about, yeah, earlier on, I meant, um, and Lillian said, you know, there's, there's five, seven unit buildings. Those would be three stories. That's the thirty five units of what I call townhomes. And then the ninety six units are four story buildings. And that's what I said, I mean, I think that they might be referred to as townhomes, but they're kind of stacked flats. So they're two story on top of two story. Correct? Yeah. So that's, and I, I don't know if you want to go back to, uh, Lillian, the, the overall site plan, you can kind of see the longer buildings. So if you see the, the two buildings fronting onto, uh, California Circle, those are the, uh, those are, uh, townhomes, three story. The other two units, oh, there, there they are. Building number three that you can see on the screen, building number four, that's right next to the park, that you can see on the screen, and building number five on the backside of the park is, uh, a three story. The other buildings, essentially buildings, you know, I guess six through thirteen would be the twelve unit stacked flats, um, condominiums. So different product types. And I think in your package, you know, you can see, uh, I think that they have, you know, the floor plans and elevations, you know, for each of the different, you know, kind of product types.
Okay. Um, the twenty one units, um, will have, what do you mean by side by side two car garage? What do you mean?
Yeah. So in the seven unit, uh, townhome project, some of the units have tandem garage and some of the units have side by side garage.
Is covered parking?
It's all covered parking. E- e- every, every one of the hundred and thirty one units has a two car enclosed garage. Yeah.
Um, about, uh, we're talking about the parking, um, the guest parking. Do you consider the guest parking, uh, and they park in the street or?
No. So, um, the site has been, so they're private streets, so they're not city maintained, they're HOA maintained. Uh, we have, I believe it's forty six guest parking spaces kind of throughout the, uh, development that, um, are open for guests, you know, members of the public. So we talked about like having, you know, this open to the park. Our thought is, is that this park is not going to necessarily be somewhere that somebody will necessarily drive to. But certainly the homeowners that are across the street from us or the apartment owners that are kind of down closer to California Circle in Dixon Landing would have an opportunity to, you know, it's a short walk for them to come visit the park. But so we have, yeah, the guest parking is just for guests. Every homeowner has two covered garage parking spots in a garage. Some of them are tandem and then some of them are side by side.
Um, the guest park, you said, uh, it's, um, building has the guest parking space or something?
Not, not each building. You can kind of see, if you look, uh, again, here on the site plan, you see a lot of, uh, kind of parking spaces right in front of the park. And then if you look kind of, uh, to the left of, I think it's building three, maybe there's unit or there's, uh, parking spots there. There's parking spots by building four. Uh, there's parking, there's a lot of parking spots that kind of side on to where the apartment building is. Essentially is anywhere that we found, we try to spread load the parking spaces around so that, you know, if somebody has a guest that comes, they can find a parking spot and it's a short walk to, you know, visit their friend or guest.
Yeah. Um, my next question is about the apartment. It looks nice apartment. And who will run the apartment? Do you, do you have an employee?
Yeah. Uh, so the apartment, so the, the plan was to, um, we had, we, um, uh, are in agreement with a, uh, um, uh, I don't, I don't think that they're, they're a apartment builder, one of the largest in the nation called TPC. And they, uh, develop, build, and then they have their own management team. So that will be a separately owned unit that, um, will not pay HOA fees. You know, it's owned by, you know, one entity.
Do you know how much for like a two bedroom apartment?
Yeah. So a-again, that was one of the questions that, uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby had, had mentioned. It depends what the, um, the county median income is at the time. But, uh, based on twenty twenty three numbers, it was probably going to be somewhere between sixteen hundred to, I think, twenty three hundred, uh, dollars per month.
And you offered that to the employee from M, MUSD, Milpitas Unified District, right?
Yeah. So, uh, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. That, it's a commitment that Pulte had made, you know, a year and a half ago, when we were talking about, you know, trying to come up with something that is a benefit to the community. I will say that Milpitas, I believe, um, has a process that you go through that you have to qualify, number one. So, you know, I mean, if you make too much money, you don't qualify for a low income or a moderate income, right? But for somebody that qualifies and proves, I mean, they're going to have to get checked out from the city. So I can't unfortunately just say, oh, my sister doesn't have a lot of money, let me, let her move in there. Everyone will be vetted through the city of Milpitas. But what we would like to do is to have, you know, thirty-five or forty of the units, if they become available, reach out to the Milpitas Unified School District and say, hey, you know, we have a one-bedroom unit that's going to be vacant on November first. Do you have anybody, you know, that, that, that could be qualified for it? Yeah. It's almost kind of like a right of first refusal, if you will.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Galong. Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Oasty?
Yes, the rental units which we have and the rents, I understand, are controlled by the county. But since it will be run by a private company, can they raise the rents or they have to consult the county? What kind of restrictions do they have or they are on their own to do anything they want to do?
No. So great question. And, and what happens, and this is a, if you look in your conditions of approval, there's conditions of approval. And so there's something called a deed restriction. And the deed restriction is I, I, there's a couple of different terms in there, but it's either fifty years or fifty-five years. So let's just assume it's going to be fifty-five years. So there's a deed restriction recorded against the property that's going to keep that affordability in place for that term. And I mean, the, the people that we're working with are not going to risk anything as far as trying to, you know, do something that's, that would be against the law, right? So you, the affordability will, will be in place for fifty-five years. They don't get to decide what that amount of money is going to be. It's actually the city, based upon the county median income that decides that. And that's looked at every year. So if the county median income goes up, then the rents can go up slightly. If the county median income goes down, that means that the rents go down. However, you know, much that would be. But, and then there was one more thing I was going to say about that. That doesn't, oh, yeah. So just to let you guys know how it works in the state of, this is, and this is kind of statewide in California, essentially, is what they say is a person shouldn't pay more than thirty percent of their gross income towards housing. I think it's housing and utilities. So based upon that income classification, where it's going to be is going to set the price of, you know, what the affordability level is. But it's not done by the developer, it's not done by the person that, you know, ultimately will own and run that apartment complex.
And also, I want to thank Pulte Homes for at least thinking about MUSD employees. And I wish someone from MUSD was here to thank them too, but nevertheless, we can, we can do that for them all. And I, is it possible when we see thirty-one lower income and forty-four moderate income? With the cost of living going high day by, day by day, what it was two years ago before pandemic and now everything is very high. The gas prices are touching. And when we are making things affordable for people who are having a hard time to pay, is it possible that out of the forty, can we reverse it to forty-four lower income and thirty-one moderate income? Or was it, how was it fixed? How did you came upon this number? That you'll have less moderate, lower income and more of the moderate income unit?
Well, thank you for asking the question. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to actually ask the planning commission to consider a change that I would like to make. First of all, how we came to that was our, our original proposal, I think, was twenty low income and fifty-five moderate and staff, the housing department staff, Robert Musalem, I think, is and planning staff had kind of come back and said, you know, we think that you should do a minimum of thirty-one. And so Pulte Group agreed to that. And I thought that that was appropriate. But I would ask the planning commission, when they make their recommendation, to say that a minimum of thirty-one units below income. Because it could very well be that the apartment builder that goes forward when they're building it would want to do a higher amount of low income. So I, the way that it's written right now says thirty-one is going to, thirty-one units are going to be a low and forty-four are going to be moderate. I would like to say, say at least thirty-one are going to be low. That gives the developer the opportunity to increase it, like you were saying, Commissioner, to, you know, help out the more needy. Right? So I mean, it, it, and I don't think that staff would be against that. If the developer came back and said, hey, we want to make ten of the units very low income, right? And we want to make forty of the units low income. And we want to make, you know, thirty-five units moderate or something like that. Then, you know, that's something that in my opinion helps the city from the RENA numbers, but is, are helping, you know, the less fortunate as you, you know, kind of brought up. So I would just ask the commission to consider that in their recommendation, just changing, instead of saying thirty-one, just say at a minimum thirty-one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's all for now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Oasty. Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I have several questions. Can we put the slide up with parking? It was a, a chart, like a spreadsheet that had, that talked about the parking. Yeah, that's the one there. Okay, so. All right. So forty-six spaces. Okay. And then the nearest, so that's the, the guest parking, that's what's provided. I guess maybe this either question for you or, or other than this guest parking here, is there other parking outside of the, you know, the complex?
The development, yeah. There, there's no street parking on California Circle as far as I'm aware.
Okay. So if there's out of parking, I'm, I think forty-six is, is, I'm just thinking worst case, you know, someone has a party at the park and, you know, they're out of spaces, where would they park? So I'm just wondering, do you know where the nearest place that?
Yeah. Open, opening, you know, I mean, as far as what's allowable, you know, you're probably talking about going down Dixon Landing Road.
Okay.
You know?
So somewhere Dixon Landing.
Yeah. I mean, what would, what, you know, may happen, you know, and I'm certainly guilty of doing it, right, is, you know, you know, a, a place is closed or something like that. Oh, this is open, right? So I just, you know, kind of pull, pull in there. I'm sure what a lot of people do, but, you know, legal public parking, yeah, is, you know, everything is privately owned.
All right. Now, got that. Understood that. Um, second question. Okay. So thanks for answering that question. Second question I had. So it was also mentioned about, and Commissioner Oasty also alluded to that as well, you know, so thank you again for looking out for MUSD and appreciative that you talk into superintendent. Just in terms of that, you know, we're targeting MUSD. How is that guaranteed? You know, for the MUSD, you know, employees or, you know, the teachers and whatnot, how is that like a certain portion is going to be provided to them? How will that be guaranteed?
Yeah. You know, my, what, what I would propose to Pulte, you know, and, and to MUSD is to, is enter into a, you know, essentially a letter agreement, right, or, you know, statement of intent type thing that I think Pulte is, you know, more than willing to, to do.
Okay. So a statement of intent. My third question. You know, I saw on there about, there were cards. And this is just a confirmation, this is probably for Ms. Van Hoa. There were cards sent out to all the nearby residences, but I didn't see up there. How many public comments were received out of when all the cards were sent?
Outside of the EIR comment period, we haven't received any formal comments during the public comment period since we sent out the postcards.
Mr. Chair, there, there were three, however, during the EIR period. That's part of the, the final EIR. I think two of them were state or county agencies. And one was from a, out of the city, another developer.
Okay.
Asked a question.
Yeah. I was just curious, I didn't see that number. Their sites want a confirmation on that. Fourth question I had, I did see on there regarding the height. And then there was a variation. I don't know if we can show that slide up there.
I believe the chair is looking for one of the density bonus waiver slides.
Right.
Looking for it.
Okay. So I just see the apartment building. There's a waiver. So maximum is fifteen feet as a standard applicer request is three foot, ten inches, I'm sorry, eighteen foot and ten inches. So that's almost four feet above that. And so the density, just to confirm, the, the density bonus law does allow that then. So I see that's, okay. So I just needed confirmation. I, I see that that's there.
Yeah.
All right. And then my last question is, you know, was also mentioned the, the RENA numbers. So this unit, I mean, with these number of units, what percentage, and this might be a question for you, planning director, what percentage of the RENA numbers are being met?
Arena allocation was six thousand seven hundred and thirteen, I believe. I don't recall exactly the breakdown between the various income categories. But we can look that up.
Okay. No, I, I think I got the numbers there, my head there, right? So, no, appreciate that. I don't have any other questions there. I see that Commissioner Obana, you have another question? Go ahead.
Yeah. Can you put that slide that has that five million and the three million something? I just need clarification. Is the five million and the three million, let's see the slide. There. There is that there. So that the Parkland acreage, that five million and the three million, is that the three million is part of the five or it's five and three?
Lillian, do you want me to answer that or take a stab at it?
I can answer it. So the, the three million dollars that you see highlighted or written in red on the table, that's the remaining balance due of the five million.
So it's part of the five? Yeah. Okay. So one more, one more. So we mentioned that if we should make any adjustment, we would say going back to the very low income, a minimum of thirty-one at the very low income and a forty-four at the moderate low?
So our, our application, our proposal is thirty-one low and forty-four moderate.
And we can propose and add the words a minimum of thirty-one at the very low?
No, I said, I, I would ask you to, to make a modification saying a minimum of thirty-one low. So if it, if, if you have the word at a minimum, it gives us the flexibility now or in the future to, to make more or to have, you know, to change the balance essentially.
And then keep the forty-four at the moderate low?
Well, yeah. But I mean, if we add, so let's say I was going to change it as Commissioner Ashwathy had said to say, hey, you know what? Let's change it to forty-four low and thirty-one moderate. You know, so if you add the language at a minimum, I think it gives us that ability to do.
Okay. At the minimum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from any commissioners to either staff or applicant? If there's no questions, I do see that our deputy fire chief is on. They're belting. Just wondered if he had any comments or, you know, statement regarding this project?
Um, nothing. As any project to this level, we do a customary review as it comes into planning that we have had no concerns with accessibility or systems for fire protection. We will obviously do further review as, as submissions come in later.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Fire Chief. Does any other commissioners have any questions further? Our deputy fire chief? Okay. If there are no questions, other questions, then Commissioner Galong, I see your finger on the button. You have asked a question. Go ahead, Commissioner Galong.
Fire chief, right? In case there is fire on that location, how fast can you get there? There's the, yeah, how fast?
I would not actually be able to give you a, a specific ETA for, for our response to that location, but it would not be significantly problematic for us as far as what we're looking at in terms of roadways and accessibility to the space.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to point out that I know that that was covered in the EIR. So I don't know if the other gentleman wants to talk about it. But I will say that under, in California now, Allah, all of the units will be sprinkled. So, you know, that's, and, and, and there is a response time that was talked about in the EIR that was considered acceptable.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public forum. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment on this project?
Chair, we do not have any community members in the chamber with comment. Neither do we have any hands raised in the Zoom queue.
Okay. Okay. We don't have any public comment. I'm going to go ahead and do I have a motion to close the public? Go ahead.
I was going to address just at the end. I just wanted to take the time to really thank the city manager, Ned Thomas, Jay, the whole, the whole planning department, Lillian. We had her, we missed her for a little bit, and Michael Fosetti jumped in, Matt Kano's whole team. It, it's really my pleasure working with the city of Milpitas. My wife and my father-in-law, my father-in-law still lives here. My wife did live here. Milpitas is like a second home to me. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sol. All right. If there's no other, if there's no public comment, can I get a motion to close the public forum? Okay. Vice Chair makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second from Commissioner Oasty. Ms. Medina, would you please go down and do roll call vote?
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Galong?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Vice Chair Siradella?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair Chuan?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, public comment is now closed. Any other last questions from any of the commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby, okay. Any last questions from any of the commissioners or any deliberations, um, discussion? Uh, Commissioner Galan?
Yeah, um, I think they mentioned earlier about the traffic report, it's not part of the environmental impact report. They said that we move forward without that traffic report.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
I'm saying the traffic report, uh, do we need that to move this forward, this project? As they mentioned earlier, they're, they're not part of the E, E, EIR.
Uh, I'll go ahead, uh, uh, planning director.
I think you're getting at, um, so under California law, uh, cities are required to analyze traffic impacts through a new metric now, which is vehicle miles traveled, which is what the EIR analyzed. The old, the, the previous way was level of service, which is typically a measure of traffic, local traffic congestion. But the state has stated that that will no longer be part of the SEQA analysis. But cities still have the right to require that analysis outside of SEQA, which was done for this project. So it's still a part of the project. The analysis was done, but it's not considered a metric to determine a significant impact. Um, so the, the traffic impact analysis was still done and we can still, um, if it finds that there are impacts, we can still, uh, require improvements. We just won't call it mitigation anymore.
Can you have a question, uh, Commissioner, uh, and just before, um, so just to confirm that one there, so, um, as a condition of approval, um, that's not it's not necessarily needed right now, or is, or is that, I just want to understand that.
I think for the details, I'll defer to, uh, senior planner Lillian Van Hoa, but, you know, from a traffic impact analysis, if there are improvements necessary, we can incorporate it as a condition of approval.
Okay.
And I, we can confirm with the city attorney on this. But I, I believe you have to move both parts of the project and in your recommendation to the city council. So you have to recommend the certification of the EIR and the, and recommend approval of the project. City attorney.
I'm going to go, uh, CD attorney. Yeah. By the way, I, I did capture all the different recommendations as well too, and I'll help you run those through towards the end and then ask for your recommendation, uh, on language, uh, CD attorney. So, um, but go, let's go ahead. I'll, I'll let you speak on this particular one.
Right, just to clarify, there are two proposed resolutions before the planning commission in relation to this item. One of them relates to a variety of different entitlements. The other one relates to the EIR, which is completed final at this juncture. Um, in relation to the EIR, the planning commission would be recommending or not recommending certification of that EIR to the city council. Um, this is an EIR that has gone through the draft stage, was circulated, had public comment on it. A final was also made publicly available. And now we're at the juncture where that final EIR is being certified.
Thank you, CD attorney. Uh, Commissioner Albana, I saw you, you, uh, just before we were talking about the parking. Did you want to make a have a question or, or, um, comment?
No question. I just wanted to says, uh, we're also very thankful to Pulte Homes, the developers, and also ah, the tremendous effort that the city staff and everybody puts into it. It's not easy, but we always just want to make sure we consider the residents of Milpitas, our improvement and development of the city as a whole. And basically how we could also make the, meet the housing, uh, not only affordability, but also the our housing crisis. So I want to say thank you so much. And of course I wanted to, uh, recommend that we adopt this with the following changes we talked about.
Let me, let me summarize, and then I'm going to go and ask if anyone has any motions. But in the meantime, I'm, you know, asking anyone else has any other comments or deliberations or any other further questions? And if there's not, I'm going to, um, just summarize what I captured. Um, and, um, Ms. Van Hoa, planning director or CD attorney, you know, please, uh, you know, correct me and any commissioners, if, if I miss something, please let me know. So, uh, you know, first item I had on there, uh, was considerations for dog park. And then two, I heard, uh, you know, que- uh, questions and considerations for, you know, some of the townhomes being, uh, made affordable, considering the affordable housing ordinance there. I also heard, uh, you know, in regard to traffic, I think we've already discussed that, but the traffic and also mass transit alternatives, um, something to be worked out with VTA. I also heard, um, you know, considerations for the number of uh, minimum units, um, for low income as well as moderate. So that one I think need help, actually all of them will need help on wording on it. And then the final one that I also had, um, I didn't know if this was required, um, because, uh, it was mentioned in the slides to, you know, that, uh, MUSD would get, you know, essentially they, they would get priority. And it was also discussed about having a letter of intent. Um, so just wanted to know. So those are the, the, the five items I captured. Did I miss anything? I'm asking the planning commissioners, did I miss anything? Okay. If I didn't miss anything, I'm going to defer over to, um, our planning staff as well as our CD attorney for language, uh, around that, or if there are the recommendation to incorporate these recommendations if a motion is made to, uh, approve the, um, the resolution.
So Chair, I think you're, you're correct that, um, at this juncture for discussion among the commission, if as part of those discussions, um, there were different kinds of additional conditions of approval or other kinds of elements, um, that you wanted um, to be put into, um, what currently appears in the resolution, you can do so. Um, you just need to have so the final motion reflect whatever the consensus on that item is so that we know that what we're voting on. You could add different kinds of conditions, um, including ones that would modifications of conditions like those that related to the number of low, uh, income affordable units versus moderate income affordable units um, that the project applicants suggested. Um, in terms of the actual language, you don't have to necessarily agree on the exact language that would appear on the recommendation you give to the council. You could give clear, so long as we have clear direction on the content. The actual form of that could be subject to either, um, planning staff's approval of language or the city attorney's office approval of language, depending on the nature of the condition that we're looking at. Um, that we could, that staff can work to draft that, um, to turn whatever additional conditions um, or other criteria, um, that you're adding.
All right, thank you, CD attorney. So, uh, my recommendation, you know, here is, as I, as I stated was, um, you know, in terms of and, you know, please, um, if I need to restate something in a different way, um, I think the recommendations here and, and considering this whole thing is, 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 I mean, the, the you know, the project here, we're actually making a recommendation to CD council and, um, you know, CD council will have the final say. Um, but the recommendations I'm hearing is, uh, recommend, uh, the CD council, uh, add a, uh, or consider adding a, a dog park. Um, I guess the recommendation will be, um, to work with, uh, Pulte Homes, to work with, uh, CD staff to consider, uh, adding a dog park. To, um, consider the uh, affordable housing ordinance, uh, in relation and adding, uh, townhomes in addition to the deed restricted, uh, rental units. And these are just considerations, um, that I'm, I'm just stating, uh, for that one there. Uh, three, um, if needed, uh, a traffic, uh, report and mass, uh, transit alternative with VTA. Consider, uh, adding a letter of intent to guarantee MUSD the housing discussed. And finally, um, consider requiring at a minimum thirty-one units. But consider, uh, additional numbers as needed for the low income um, and moderate housing, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, moderate housing for the apartments. Does that sound, um? If, if, let's say someone makes a motion and they say, um, and also adding on the five recommendations that, uh, Chair Chuan added, would those be appropriate?
Um, so Chair, I do think that, um, for each one of those, there may be a little bit more direction the staff would need that they could turn those recommendations into, um, something that could be added. Um, so it might be worth trying to get discussion among the, uh, commission to be able to talk about which ones of those and then what contours. For instance, if the dog park is in addition to, um, the current park space proposed, or part of or an incorporation, there can be other kinds of factors with that. One thing that I would say from a legal perspective in relation to the having the conditions, um, relate to priority for MUSD, the city's affordable housing ordinance, the way that it is administered is through a lottery system. So for those who qualify through the city's system for below market rate unit, um, those are then offered out to the people who have qualified for the various levels through a lottery system. Um, so that would be fundamentally inconsistent, um, administered from the city's side in that manner. So that may not be something that could be recommended in that form, um, as a condition of approval in, 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 in that manner. The, uh, the other parts for the, um, traffic or mass transit with VTA, those may be issues that are beyond the scope of this current project. For instance, whether or not VTA was to add stops. Um, and the, the approvals do need to relate to, um, uh, issues specific to the project within the project's control.
Planning Director, do you have any comments around any of these?
Just to add on a little bit regarding the VTA coordination, um, I would agree that, uh, it's a larger discussion and, uh, it would require a new route to have a bus stop. You know, to consider a bus stop there. Um, so that would be a little bit of a logistical challenge.
Okay. Commissioner Albana?
Yeah, I remember that, um, planning director mentioned that in the future, I think we can consider that with regards to, because that will be a need as the population grows there of the residents when Pulte Homes are open already that then the, the city can decide if they would have a bus system and all of that stuff in the future. But I think it has nothing to be in right now, right? That has to be decided. But, um, is it possible to say maybe like the planning commission, let's say, uh, where is this, um, adopts resolution, et cetera, et cetera, but would, uh, with the following consideration, Tony, like, uh, with the following, a consideration to include a pet park and possibly, um, consider opening the possibility of having a low or moderate income sale of townhomes or condos. Is that possible to just say that? Plus, of course, the, at the minimum of thirty-one low income, forty-four at the moderate low rental income for apartments? Just like that, as a consideration. Is that possible then? And then, uh, recommended adoption of the resolution?
Right, so in terms of form, um, eventually, once you have had sufficient discussion that someone feels like that it's an appropriate time to bring a motion, um, to put before the commission a proposal for what the final approval or denial or, or modification would look like. Then if, what, what if the proposal was to approve the res- whichever, the resolution, but with stated additions, then you would simply have the motion state the, uh, approval of the resolution with the following stated conditions. And those stated conditions don't need to have the exact language. Um, for additional clauses, they need to be very clear in the, uh, the content of the, uh, the substance of the, um, of the proposed change, but it could be substance prose change with lot, with language to be uh, approved to form by the city attorney or approved to form by the planning director. The one thing to note though, for the proposal related to the townhome units, so that is, there are two different changes that are before the planning commission tonight. Um, requesting for your recommendation to the city council in relation to that. So the city's, um, density bonus ordinance requires that, um, the, the affordable units be evenly dispersed throughout the project among all the different types of units. The applicant is seeking a, um, a, a change from that um, and asking that recommendation. So that condition in some ways is contrary to that particular facet the applicant is asking you to approve. There is also a request to approve a, um, a, a change to the, change in the manner of compliance for the affordable housing ordinance. Affordable housing ordinance similarly requires the affordable units to be dispersed throughout, um, the project. Um, the applicant is requesting again for, for a change in that. So that particular proposed condition of can we make some of the townhomes applicable, that goes to the, those two proposed changes? And whether or not, to what degree you want to approve those?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Here, may I?
Uh, go ahead, uh, Commissioner Owasty.
Oh, when we are talking of the dog park, are we talking of making the same dog park? Uh, the same park as a dog park or a portion of it will be a dog park where people can, uh, leave their dogs off leashes and they can play and do anything? Or we are thinking that they, as we are asking them to make a separate dog park and then they have to go through so many changes? And they may have to forego some of the places for sale or for the rental units. So can we be very clear on this? When we are having, when we are going through any kind of wording in this?
Think, I think, um, Mr. Sullivan, uh, made the comment about it being a if it were to be a dog park, it would be a private park. And on all, all I'm saying, all we're saying here is consideration. We're not, you know, requiring it. Vice Chair, I don't know if you have a comment?
Yeah, my vision is just a very small area of that park, not the whole thing. Just like we had on that other project last year where they made a very small dog.
Thank you.
But he, they already said that it was a big liability that
But they already said that it was a big liability that they didn't want to do that. And if it's a, it's a HOA responsibility, we shouldn't even have them consider doing that.
Yes, but you know, my feeling is if you have a dog, you're going to take the financial liability anyway. And I don't think that the homeowners association wouldn't have anything to, you know, a leg to, or they wouldn't have a leg to stand on and be the person that owned the dog.
Commissioner Albona?
Yes. What is the original? I think it's a park, but is it prohibited to bring your pet? So I mean, we're talking about wanting a dog park to have them run around? Or just to have? You can bring your pets? So I don't understand.
It's kind of the same, it's a park that you can take your dog to the park if they poop, you have your bags. I don't see why we're trying to make them consider having them a dog park that it's already a park.
I don't know also if some of the residents would like, I mean, if I, you know, the residents who buy and rent, if that's just going to be a dog park. Definitely they want it as a park for their kids or themselves. So to me, we, we, is there a difference if we call it as a park and a pet park? I mean, it's just a park, right? So I don't know, and maybe I can ask Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I think when we, when we mention a dog, dog park, the people can take the dog off leash and they can run around and the city ordinance and even I think we have a state ordinance also that dogs should be on leash at all times if the kids are playing in the park. And then we have someone who says, oh, I can, this is a dog park and keep your kids on leash and I'll let my dog run around. So it doesn't fit together. So let the things be as it is, people can bring their dogs, the kids can play and the dogs can be on leash. So.
Maybe I can add a comment. How big is the park? I think it's point six acres.
Point three, two acres, so about a third of an acre. And I just want to just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We're not precluding dogs from being in the park, but I think what the vice chair was getting at was a fence, a fenced in location where people would be able to take their dogs off of leash. That's what I think when you say dog park. So dogs will be able to be in the park, but they will have to be leashed. That would be, you know, that's kind of the proposal as Pulte Group has made it. I think the vice chair was asking for, can you take a small area within the park and what the commission is deciding? And set aside a small, you know, maybe forty foot by twenty foot area that would be fenced where people can bring their dogs in and then take the dogs off leash. And usually the dogs play with each other. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Chair?
Uh, correct. And then, you know, I'm sure there would be a little what would you call it dispenser for plastic bags there too? And this way, if you had them just running around the park, maybe you forgot your plastic bag.
This, the senior vice president of construction of activities just told me even without the dog park, we have the plastic bags throughout the development for people walking their dogs.
I'd like to make a comment, Chair. Yeah. It will be a class for, for, for that area. If you can put a little circle thing where you can let your dogs, you know, run, yeah, that's good. I would like to add that, yeah. But it will just be a portion, like a small area where it's fenced and they can run around. Because there are kids also. Our kids run around there, I mean, you know, the dogs, so. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Albona?
If we have a dog park, it's open to the public or we should be for the, for the ten?
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I was just thinking that if there were no dogs in this rounded area or the twenty by forty foot area, you could let your kids run around in there without having to worry about them.
All right. All right. Chair, if I may, go ahead, City Attorney. Um, just one point in case it helps with the conversation. So the, the particular element that these comments relate to is the city has among its different dedication requirements, a dedication of parkland. And it gives multiple different ways for an applicant to fulfill that dedication requirement. Here we have one election of a private park being the proposed. That ultimately is something that the city council has to decide if they're going to accept. So for your action in that relation, there are a couple of, are there a few different things that you could do? If your recommendation would be not to, that the city council not approve this unless there was a dog park, then I think that then that would need to have very specifics on what kind of a dog park, to what degree that you'd need to see it in order to, if, if your intent was to otherwise recommend approval of this project. If on the other hand, you didn't, your approval of the project and the other elements where it's not conditioned on that feature, you can also with your approval of other elements, just put a recommendation for considerations for improvements and for things like that that when the city council hears of this, they can hear your recommendations for way to approve. So I just want to be very clear for the different kinds of things, depending on if the if the issues that you're seeing change your approval on the various findings that are put before you in the staff report. And those kinds of things need to be explicitly stated with reservations and those kinds of things. On the other hand, separate and apart from those approvals, you can also make recommendations along with the project for ways in which you think it might be improved. It's just not necessary that, yeah, it has to do those things or the city council has to adopt those things.
Thank you, City Attorney. And actually, I, I think that's what we're just making recommendations. I don't think these are hard recommendations. I mean, what I, I think what they're saying and what we've done in the past as a planning commission is, you know, we've read the, you know, adoption of the resolution. And then towards the end, there's just like with recommendation to you know, and we use loose language, like potentially add a, you know, dog, dog park in, you know, through working with, you know, city staff on that. And then, you know, like I was saying about the consideration for the townhomes, you know, because like you said that, you know, they're asking for an amendment or, you know, to, to change the you know, affordable housing ordinance, you know, to, to an extent that, so it's just a recommendation to you know, consider you know, adding, you know, townhomes, you know. You know, it's not requiring just, you know, for them to, it's just sort of raising the visibility, you know, to it, just for them to consider. I mean, like I said, this is, it's just an added piece of the language in the recommendation. And then you know, and then also the recommendation was to change the apartments, you know, the, for the low income and, you know, you know, it just changed the wording to minimum thirty-one units. And also, uh, you know, I think we've gone around to the VTA thing. I think we're just not going to add that piece of it in there. It sounds a little it, it beyond the scope of this as well as the traffic. I mean, that's part of the EIR. So I think that's probably going to be, you know, done. The letter intent was just, they've already stated that they would consider that. But I would just probably add a language saying like, you know, consider adding a letter of intent or MUSD for the affordable housing. I mean, these are all very just recommendations, they're not requirements. I think that's what we're saying here. Does that sound reasonable, City Attorney?
Uh, the only thing that I'd point out for any ultimate motions, it sounds like for the project applicant's proposal in relation to the thirty-four low income minimum, the thirty, sorry, thirty-one, I apologize. Uh, the thirty-one minimum was that that was actually a proposed change throughout the entirety of the conditions of approval and in other places, but that I was actually, I think a proposed change for clarification that that is a minimum only and that the moderate units could also be low income units. In which case, then that would need to be something if, if the direction was to accept and adopt that as part and to change all those things, then we should just direct staff accordingly. And then the, the only other point to, to just say is for the, in relation to the townhomes, that is the difference in the request for both the affordable housing ordinance. The, the alternative manner of compliance for that one, as well as a change to how our density bonus ordinance is applied to this project. Having the affordable units be put into the townhouses is fundamentally different than what the applicant is requesting in relation to this project.
So let's say if somebody reads, reads the recommendation there and the adoption of a resolution, can they just state in addition to consider the recommend, recommendations made according to the recommendations, consider recommendations made by what I just said, by Chair Chuan and a discussion with City Attorney? Would that be appropriate or, I mean, I can restate.
I, I do think we'll, we'll need them to be a little bit more restated. So for, to clarify, if the intent was to direct staff for the final resolution that you're adopting to change all the language in it to reflect that minimum, then that should be the direction for an actual change. If there were some things that you do not want to actually, you want to approve the resolution without other changes, but then to include with the approval of that resolution, certain recommendations to council, then we just need to state with that motion what those recommendations are, just for clarity. I'd be happy to help state those concisely if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful if you wouldn't mind helping us state those. Like I said, these are all just, you know, loose recommendations based on, you know, comments that were made that you heard.
So depending on the, the scope of the motion, it sounds like that what is, what I've heard being discussed was approval of, of the, to adopt the resolution as stated for twenty-three dash zero one eight with a modification such that any requirement for there to be thirty-one units of low income and forty-one or forty-three unit, forty-four units of moderate income that the forty, that the thirty-one unit is a minimum and that the forty-four moderate units could also be low income units. And to change that throughout. And then, and that's the, to be approved and that approval to be with a recommendation from the planning commission for consideration of a dog park being incorporated into the private parkland. And and a recommendation that some of the townhomes also be affordable units. If, if I'm correct, that that covers what remains on the table.
And what about the letter of intent?
So the, the one issue that I'd bring up with the letter intended is again, our current system doesn't allow for designation of particular persons for affordable units. Applicants are qualified. When units become available in our system, they're given out on a lottery. So the way the city currently administers that program would be inconsistent with that current recommendation.
Okay. So let's make a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, Chair. Anybody?
Okay, Commissioner Albona?
Okay.
Are you ready for the resolution or?
Yeah, she's, she's going to make a motion.
I'm making a motion to to adopt resolution number two, three dash zero, one, eight. With the modification.
I would read the whole thing.
I'll read.
Yeah, and then, and then at the end, and then state the, with modifications at the very end, after you read both of them.
Begin again. I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero, one, eight, recommending that the city council certify an environmental impact report pursuant to the Public Resources Code Sections two, one, zero, eight, zero, D and two, one, zero, eight, two point two, D and the Sequoia Guidelines Section one, five, zero, six, four. With the modi, with some modifications.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I was incorrect when I spoke before that the modifications would be to resolution twenty-three dash zero, one, eight. I think the modification is proposed to twenty-three dash zero, one, seven.
All right.
The first resolution is for certification of the EIR. The second resolution is for all the various entitlements.
Oh, I see. Okay, so do I have to repeat?
I would repeat it, go ahead.
All right, I'll repeat. It's okay. I propose that we adopt resolution number two, three, that zero, one, eight, recommending that the city council certify an environmental impact report pursuant to Public Resources Code Sections two, one, zero, eight, zero, D and two, one, zero, eight, two, dot, two, D and the Sequoia Guidelines Section one, zero, five, six, four.
Oh, one, five. You said one, zero, five.
One, five, zero, six, four. I go one at a time?
Yeah, keep, keep going.
Oh, and adopt resolution number two, three, that zero, one, seven, recommending that the city council approve general plan text amendment number GP two, two, dash, zero, 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 one. Zoning map amendment number Z A two, two, dash, zero, 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 one. Site development permit number S D two, two, dash, zero, 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 three. Additional use permit number U P two, two, dash, zero, 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 one. Besting tentative map number M T two, two, dash, zero, 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 one. Density bonus permit number B B two, two, dash, zero, 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 three. Re-removal permit number T R two, three, dash, zero, zero, two, one. Subject to the findings and conditions of approval. With some modifications that the planning commission would like to consider.
You can say as stated by the city attorney.
As stated by the city attorney. Like the.
I, I would just leave it, and City Attorney?
That being that the resolution twenty-three dash zero, one, seven be amended throughout such that the thirty-one low income affordable units proposed be a minimum and the forty-four moderate income units proposed could also be built as low income units. And to accompany that approved, that, that recommendation to approve with recommendations that the city council and the applicant consider adding a dog park to the park space proposed in the, the center of the project. And that the townhomes include affordable units.
Before she moves on, just interrupting the regarding letter intent, that's only just for the affordable for the townhomes, right, but not necessarily for the apartments? For the townhomes, right, but not necessarily for the apartments?
So for what I stayed, I hadn't stayed, the letter of intent? If that was something that you were interested in, we could state an amendment to the motion? What I had understood was being discussed was to make available affordable units? To, that what the applicant discusses, make available affordable units to the?
MUSD.
MUSD employees. And the point that I was saying was our below market housing program gives those units out on a lottery? So it cannot be done preferentially to one group currently? They could obviously offer other market rate units to anyone they choose.
But the intent would be there, right, for, I guess I just want to understand, what are the options that? What they stated on there that, you know, from the one slide that they had? You know, she's saying that preference would be to MUSD, please?
Um, I, I guess what I, what I mean to be saying is, is we, you can propose recommendations to city council. What I'm trying to encourage on is currently with the way our system is set up? They can't, they're given out in a lottery system, not on any kind of a preferential system. I think what I had heard the applicant proposing was some kinds of private agreements with MUSD? Outside of the city's functions, although I, I wasn't clear to me if those have been adopted or hoped for.
Okay, so it would be just a consideration then? Consideration for MUSD, please?
Uh, you could include a recommendation that the ci, that the city council require consideration for, require the applicant to work with MUSD related to housing?
Okay, can we use that language that you just said right now?
For a recommendation that the applicant work with MUSD for, for housing for their employees?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. City Attorney, is that motion makes sense and it's, it's, we got a motion and it's been seconded? You're okay with the language as we stated?
Um, I think that it might make more sense, given my interruption to it, that we, we stated again. I know that that's going to be a pain, but for clarity, what I had, why I had the motion being through those discussions was? To adopt resolution number twenty three, dash, zero, one, eight? Recommending that city council certify an environmental impact report pursuant to Public Resources Code? Section twenty one, zero, eight, zero, D? And twenty one, zero, eight, two, point, two, D? And Sequoia Guidelines Section one, five, zero, six, four? And adopt resolution number twenty three, dash, zero, one, seven? Recommending that the city council approve general plan text amendment number GP twenty two, dash, zero, 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 one? Zoning map amendment number Z A twenty two, dash, zero, 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 one? Site development permit number S D twenty two, dash, zero, 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 three? Conditional use permit number U P twenty two, dash, zero, 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 one? Besting tentative map number M T twenty two, dash, zero, 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 one? Density bonus permit number B, D B twenty two, dash, zero, zero, three? Tree removal permit number T R twenty three, dash, zero, zero, two, one? And, and subject to the financing conditions approval? That resolution number twenty three, dash, zero, one, seven? And the financing condition approval be amended throughout? Such that the thirty one units of low income housing? And forty four units of moderate income housing be modified? So that the thirty one units of low income housing is a minimum? And the forty four units of moderate income housing can also be billed as low income housing? And then separately, to recommend to the city council the following? That a dog park be incorporated into the parkland in the center of the project? That the townhomes be made with affordable units? And that the, and that the project applicant work with MUSD for an agreement? To provide housing for their employees in the project?
As motion makers, you're okay with that?
Yes, very true.
Okay, are you still second?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Medina?
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
I.
Commissioner Owasty?
Hi.
Commissioner Galong?
Hi.
Commissioner Albona?
Hi.
Vice Chair, Sierra Della?
Hi.
Chair Chuan?
Hi. Motion passes. Resolutions approved with, uh, what was stated. Congratulations. And thank you for our, for your patience.
Thank you.
Next item, new business, no items. Uh, legalese, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the state, date of said decision and pay any required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Next item, adjournment. Ms. Medina, can you do the roll call vote for adjournment?
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Hi.
Commissioner Owasty?
Hi.
Commissioner Galong?
Hi.
Commissioner Albona?
Hi.
Vice Chair Sierra Della?
Hi.
Chair Chuan?
Hi, meeting adjourned.